Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Retreat agenda.
Wow, that'd be great.
Because I got that.
Two.
I'm sorry.
The retreat agenda?
That would be great. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Michael got all excited and dialed you early.
Okay, that's all right, I'm here.
How's the weather on Nantucket?
It's beautiful today, how about you guys?
It's hot.
Hot.
Sticky, steamy. But there's no ocean nearby, so what are we to do?
Yeah, definitely, we have, you know, we have like, at least eight degrees lower than you guys all the time.
Easily.
So it never gets that hot, yeah, which is nice when your air conditioning's broken, so.
Oh. But I was down in the Cape over the weekend, it was pretty hot there, too.
Yeah, I think we stay, we stay cooler even than the Cape, which is helpful, yeah, when your air conditioning's broken.
The islands are nice. So, Michelle, since we're going to be recorded and stuff, I'll just go through the remote participation rules again for the camera, okay?
Sounds good.
I know that you know them, but.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Everybody here today?
Kim is, Liz is on vacation and Kim is not because of the passing of her aunt.
That's right, okay.
And, Michelle, just so you know, I made copies, I've got the agenda and the corresponding materials for the retreat.
Okay.
So I will email all of that to you later on today.
Perfect.
Because I made copies for those who are here and then I figured I'd send it to you and Kim and Liz, that way you've got a week to mull things over. You want to go see if Dave's there?
I'll go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, stand by in five, four, three, two, one.
Good afternoon and welcome to the school committee meeting, today Monday, July the 13th. We are being recorded for LCTV aired live, so we'll begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and for all.
Thanks, Michelle, you threw me off there.
I'm sorry, I could not do it, I just didn't want to be.
That's quite all right.
Are you just doing it by yourself in?
In our house.
I am, I am.
So, no problem. Our mission statement is Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. For those of you watching, the school committee did vote to approve and allow remote participation, so we do have a member of the school committee who is participating remotely today. Michelle Gottske is participating remotely due to distance, and that means that today all votes will be roll call votes, whether or not they're in executive session, so that is why, and that's why you can hear Michelle speak but can't see her present. So, we will begin with budget transfer requests. John?
Correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence. I apologize, there is correspondence for this meeting, Kim is not with us today due to a death in the family. There is an emailed letter dated July 7th, 2015, from Ms. Jessica Hutchins regarding televising the summer meetings of the school committee. So now, moving on for finance sub, John?
Okay, well, the finance sub committee, excuse me, met, what was it, last Wednesday?
July 8th.
Okay, July 8th, and considered the budget transfers as outlined in the document in the request email from Mr. Michael Rabel, Director of DPW. And I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget transfer of $11,106.08 to the Department of Public Works to cover unanticipated repairs to the Glenbrook Catch Basin.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Tom?
Do you want to talk about that?
Okay, so the town, Mr. Rabel sent us this communication requesting that the school committee consider moving the $11,000. Was a washout in the back corner of the parking lot at Glenbrook in which a catch basin kind of went down the back hill there, and there was some of the pavement also was compromised, so it was something they had to address relatively quickly. And with the timing of it being mid-June, they really did not have the funds left in their budget. They have requested of the town to see if they have the money within the town's budget to move it around, so this request is not for certain, but if the town can't come up with the $11,000 on their side, they had asked if we would be willing to consider moving it from the school's budget over to DPW to cover the cost that they incur. So, as of right now, they're still looking into it, so I don't have a concrete definitive answer that they need to have the money moved. And if you're wondering, the request was for $11,266.08, the finance sub did reduce that by $160, there were some questions regarding some grass seed, so it was, the motion that was read by Mr. Fitzgerald is less the amount that finance sub recommended.
Go ahead.
So, I have a concern about this, and, you know, and certainly I'm all one for trying to be collegial and help out other departments when they need help, and certainly this relates to a building that we maintain, but I also believe that this kind of sets a bad precedent, the same precedent that we've considered in the past when it comes to spending, you know, end-of-year funds or school choice monies on carpet replacements. The maintenance of the buildings, as the select board reminds us time and time again, is the purview of the select board, and, you know, understanding that they may not have the funding available, and certainly someone needs to pay the bills on this, but what's going to happen when something more expensive comes down the line and there's a cost associated with a school building? You know, they can't have it both ways, we can't continue to let them have it both ways, where they tell us that we're tenants in the buildings and that they're the landlord, but then they're asking us to take care of an expense that really has to do with drainage, doesn't even have to do with the school, has to do with drainage, which is, they're the water and sewer wardens. So, I don't know if I can support this.
And, Michael, I'll respond, we did have that discussion at finance sub about this setting a precedent, and I think we all asked Tom his feelings because, you know, we value his opinion and we know where he stands on those type of precedents. The fact is that with the timing of it, the turnback money of whatever we've not used in our budget is going to be given back to the town.
Sure.
So, it's going to either come out of that or transferred now, and Tom has had lengthy discussions with Paul Pasterzak, you know, about the ability to transfer money, so we agree with you that we don't want to start setting a precedent.
So, if they're going to be receiving, if we're going to be turning back money, and that money is going to be theirs to begin with, to spend, or to be certified as free cash, then why are we going through the effort of authorizing a transfer that may not have to be authorized to begin with?
Well, because our next meeting is on July 27th, and I won't be here to update you as to whether or not they were successful in identifying the money.
Okay.
So, they asked if we could get school committee approval in case the transfer needs to occur, so I told them I would bring it forward for school committee consideration.
So, it's not a definite.
And as Janet indicated, we did talk about it at finance sub, and those same questions were asked, and I did say that due to the circumstances of it being something that was completely unforeseen.
Sure.
It's not like this was a deficit in one of the
Right.
Buildings or the grounds that could have been planned for or expected.
But I think, again, it gets back to the point of, you know, unexpected things are going to happen with buildings that are 40 or 50 years old, even buildings that are two years old, you know, but at what point are we on the hook for covering costs that are inherently costs that the general government should be covering? And, you know, I don't necessarily know how comfortable I am authorizing a potential transfer, even if they don't need it, because what's stopping them from coming and saying, "Well, we're going to take the money anyway"?
Well, we discussed most of this stuff at the meeting, and if you're not comfortable voting for it, then don't vote for it.
I don't think I'm voting.
But, well, do what you want to do, but this isn't setting a precedent that's going to lock us in for eternity, this is a specific ad hoc request for this particular emergency, and that's why we supported it, but.
And we did support it on the fact that, you know, Tom is taking his vacation during our next meeting, so that he doesn't, you know, we won't have the ability to be updated, it would just be a matter of that should the town need the finances, and I think it's more a matter of timing, am I not correct, Tom?
Correct.
That it's rather than waiting until the certification of free cash
In the fall.
In the fall, so that they can pay their bills now, and because we have the ability to transfer funds much more easily than the town side does. We don't disagree with you at all about the precedent setting or the fact that the town is responsible for maintaining the structures and the facilities, it's just a matter of collegiality.
Well, I would certainly hope that, should this motion pass today, that when we do need something related to one of our buildings, we're not given the same hard time that we are normally given by our colleagues on the select board.
One would hope, but that's not the reason we're authorizing this.
I just, you know, I feel like we consistently try to be the bearer of goodwill, and consistently are told that we are not doing that at all, I don't know.
Russ, did you have anything?
Well, I think we could send a letter along to the board if we approve it, saying, "We're doing this because of the unusual circumstances, we don't consider this as precedent, but we want to work with you." I mean, they're getting this money anyway, one way or the other.
Correct.
If we go the free cash route, they got to wait a whole nother year before they can use the money we give back to them this year.
They would have to have it certified and, I believe, go to town meeting to authorize its use, so yes.
So, we're just making it easier for them to use it for this purpose, they're going to get it either way, but I think Michael's point is valid, that we probably should put in writing that we don't feel this is precedent setting.
If I can be clear, I mean, the request is coming from the town manager, I don't even know if the select board has been briefed on it or not, so it's not something that I'm aware of that the select board has even addressed at this point, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. Michelle, did you have anything?
Uh, nope, I'm okay here.
All right, so, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of transferring the funds to DPW should the need arise, we're authorizing Tom to do so.
With a note as indicated.
Yeah, can we amend that to include a note?
To include a letter.
Signed by the chair.
Okay, so, the motion is now that we approve the budget transfer of $11,106.08 to the Department of Public Works to cover unanticipated repairs to the Glenbrook Catch Basin, including a letter of
Specifying the use of the money.
Specifying use and
Signed by the chair.
Signature of the chair.
And the unique characteristic of this.
Yeah, being an unusual characteristic, and again, it's only if needed which town will be informed of, so, all of those in favor will do a roll call vote?
Russell Dufer, aye.
In favor?
John Fitzgerald, aye.
In favor? Janet Robinson, aye, in favor?
Michael Clark, aye, in favor.
Michelle?
Michelle Bradsky, aye, in favor.
Okay, so by unanimous vote, all right.
Okay, I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the building use fees 2015, 2016 as presented.
Second.
And basically, this represents no significant change from the past, and that's in accord with Tom's judgment that
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
We're going all right under that, so we don't need to mess with anything more.
So, there's no change?
Yeah, the only change
Second, is there a second?
Right, Michael, it's seconded. The only changes were that Tom did adjust the custodial overtime fees to reflect the potential salary increases per ratification of their contract, and then the subcommittee suggested changing in the bottom half of the table, the custodial overtime fees had previously set up to four hours of use, yet the rental rates went up to five hours of use, so we
I thought we fixed that last year.
No.
No.
So, we're recommending to fix it this year, so those are the two changes. Tom, was there anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the change on the custodial overtime was really on the $38 rate, it was $37.50 for the 2014-2015 school year, so it's only going up by 50 cents, and the double time, which is the Sunday rate, was not affected as it's a little bit above what that rate would be, so, and then, as you indicated, Janet, youth basketball had inquired about the overtime cost associated to the four hours, and then the permit time being up to five, and why they weren't consistent, so finance sub recommended that we change it to be consistent and moved it up to five hours.
Any other, any questions, Russ?
So, is there any effect with that change in the custodial contract?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the contract really specifies how overtime is determined and so on, but this doesn't impact that.
Okay.
Michelle, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Michael, you good?
I'm all set.
All right, so, again, roll call vote, moving to recommend the finance subcommittees, moving to accept the recommendation of finance subcommittee on the approval of the building use fees 2015-16 as presented.
Russell Dufer, aye, yes.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Michelle Bradsky, aye.
Okay, so those are approved. Next item on the agenda, we've gotten communication from a couple members of the community requesting that our meetings over the summer be aired and broadcast for people to watch, and I know Russ has brought up the idea of broadcasting our retreat, so I wanted to have that discussion because generally our retreat, while it is an open meeting, it's a working open meeting where we, in a more relaxed environment, where we're working out our goals and objectives for the year, our subcommittees, and having open and frank discussions, so as chair, I could make that decision unilaterally, however, I'm not comfortable doing so, I wanted to hear from committee members. I will say that I did ask Liz and Kim, knowing that they weren't going to be able to be here today, Kim's response was that she is fine with televising the retreat, Liz had written, "This will be my fourth retreat meeting, I have viewed the retreat as a relaxed and informal session where we talk out and discuss our goals and visions for our schools, we walk around the room to confer with other members, we stretch, we don't treat it as a regular meeting, we will be there for five-plus hours, it is an informal setting that is not conducive for televised meeting, I do not believe that it should be televised because we will be tied to the conference table, sitting in a row, acting as if it was a regular meeting when its intended purpose is not so." Thank you, Liz Bone, and I'll give that for the, give both of those emails for the minutes. So, I'd like to hear, we'll start with you, Russ.
Yeah, can I just clarify, so, the only piece that I'm really looking for is now that I understand that we're going to do the superintendent's search process discussion, that's really the part that I felt should be videotaped, the rest of the retreat is more informal, but that piece, I know there's a lot of interested people in the community, that's the part that I think would be important, the rest of the retreat, you know, I go to a lot of retreats in the summer, and those are informal, and I agree with Ms. Bone that, you know, a lot of it is not something the public really would care about or be interested in, but because we're talking about the superintendent's search, that was the only part that I'm, and I don't know if we can split it up that way or how it would work, but.
Right, I can tell you, and I did pass out the agendas and the documents for the retreat, the discussion of the superintendent's search committee is going to be a matter of, you know, how we go about dividing the entire school committee into subcommittees so that everybody has a role, it's going to be how we proceed with searching for a firm, how the two subcommittees of that would work.
I think it's going to be less specific than that.
It's going to be very, you know, it's not very specific, because really, we just need to get set up to start a search firm, search, and begin the process, it's not getting into any real depth.
Well, and, I mean, I'll just say, because obviously there was that nice little off-the-record thing that made it on the record in the Long Meadow News a couple weeks ago for me, but, you know, Janet and I had lunch a couple weeks ago, once Maria told us, you know, to kind of map out our individual thoughts and, you know, what we wanted to present to the committee, and the way that I view it is less about actually like putting concrete things together and more about just kind of saying, "Well, this is what we're thinking, what do you guys think?", and then I think making like an actual presentation on the formation of those committees at like a televised meeting, but like giving people time to digest and, you know, come back with legitimate feedback on it.
I mean, the point is that we do have to begin the RFP process and the search for a search firm over the summer, I mean, we do have to start that after our retreat, but there will be no concrete decisions made prior, so I don't know if that's something, you know, with that being said, if you feel it's more appropriate to report back at the meeting after our retreat as to what was done, or if you feel that that whole hashing out process needs to be televised.
I think there's some preliminary questions that we'd have to discuss on that meeting, so one thing would be, well, usually the first step is we decide whether we're going to do an RFP at all, and I think it's kind of obvious here that we probably would have to do one. The second question is, do we, what's the scope of the search we want, do we want, you know, local, statewide, national, that's a different RFP depending on what we decide, so that discussion, I think the community might be interested in that piece of it, because a national search is more expensive, I mean, we're going to have to, that's a different animal if we go that route, so I don't think there's a lot, I think maybe that's the only decision we'd really have to make before the RFP goes out, but that's kind of what I was thinking, because if we're going to do national, we need to talk about that, and some people in the community might really want that and some might not want it, and ultimately, you know, the committee makes the decision, but I think it's something where the community probably is going to want some involvement in this process.
John?
Well, your proposal was to have the entire retreat televised, I share Liz's perspective on it, we've operated very well, I've been on here since 2008 without televising it. Part of the problem with televising is we get certain members starting to play to the cameras, and I have some disagreement with you about how much the community should have some say in who the next superintendent is going to be. We are the elected committee, the legally constituted authority for choosing the next superintendent of schools, the superintendent of schools answers to the school committee, and via the school committee responds to the community, so that, to me, is irrelevant, you know, coming off of the Blueberry Hills school thing, there's a lot of people now who want to get their fingers into the pie, and are pretending that they are left out of the process, that it's not transparent because it isn't going their way, that's a lot of rhetoric, I think, so, basically, my position is, we do not televise, and should not televise, the retreat, it should be a relaxed, informal meeting, that's the very meaning of the word retreat, and with respect to the superintendent's search committee, all of the decisions that this committee makes will be made public, and the public is invited to come in and watch, so I don't see the need to televise anything.
Michelle?
I think we should try to figure out a way to separate it into what would be like the school committee retreat portion and the agenda items, because, you know, I don't have the, you know, the fully completed agenda, but it looked like there was some business that was taking place in addition to, obviously, the school committee and the superintendent's search, so I support trying to break it up so that we have on camera the business, especially the beginning process for the superintendent's search, and then we adjourn that portion of the meeting and do the retreat, where we're doing our team building and our goal setting as a school committee, and we can do that on camera, that's what I would propose.
Michael?
Logistically, you know, I, listen, I agree that the actual discussion about the goals, you know, the retreat itself, I agree with what Liz said, you know, I think that there is a certain element of having, you know, the cameras on that puts you on edge to an extent, and, you know, you're very measured in what you say, which, you know, of course, we should always be, but I don't think it necessarily facilitates the same type of open and frank dialogue, but I think it's important when we're setting goals. When it comes to the search committee itself, you know, and how we establish it, like I said, I don't necessarily view the discussion that we're going to be having as anything more than kind of figuring out what, you know, what we should be doing, you know, and I think that the fact that these meetings are now being televised, you know, I don't, I don't know about you as chair, but I don't necessarily anticipate anything being decided that day more than just kind of figuring out how we want to tackle this animal, you know, from a committee standpoint, you know, if there is logistical ability to, you know, figure out how to televise it, if it means pushing Pat back and moving this up to the front and getting it, you know, and putting that part of it on TV, then okay, but, you know, I think that a lot of this, most, if not 99.9% of the search itself and the committee itself, is going to be operating on camera, you know, so, you know, I don't, if it's just that piece of it, I don't have a particular opinion on it, my main concern is mostly the televising of the majority of the conversation, especially around goals, you know, for the year.
Tom, just in terms of RFP processing, in order to be moving, would we need to be making a decision on the 20th, knowing your schedule and RFP schedules in order to do this in a timely manner?
Well, I think the sooner the better to help facilitate getting the process going, I mean, you'll have to come up with criteria in which you want to evaluate, you know, anybody who, any firm that responds to the RFP, so if you are going to be looking for a national firm to do a national search, the criteria you use might be different than if you're looking for somebody who does something on a more localized or state level, so, if it waits So, if it waits, then, you know, it probably puts you about a month behind or so.
Right. Which I don't think that any of us...
All right. So, I mean...
I think you should be targeting the end of July, August to get that out.
Right.
That's going to take several weeks, and by the time you get someone in place and get focus groups going in the fall, you don't want to be...
So, maybe, and I know that on the agenda, Pat is coming as a favor. She's, she's doing it, she's coming in specifically for this, so I don't necessarily want to change her time.
Right.
So, perhaps we have it where Pat and her presentation is recorded, be that in an open meeting, and have the discussion for superintendent search, and then we adjourn to our retreat. That sounds like a compromise for what everybody's wanting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. That's, that is what I would request.
Okay.
And just to respond briefly with, there's only really three things that we do that are very important. So, we have policies, we have the budget, and we have hiring the upper-level management, such as the superintendent. So, if we're going to start that process on July 20th, I'd say, you know, if we could have example RFPs for a national search in a regular state search and make decisions on the 20th, then we could start moving forward, because it takes a while. We got to interview the search firms, we got to select one. So, I'd like to do all of that on the 20th, but if we're going to do that preliminary work on the 20th, I think the public's going to want to know what we're doing.
Michelle, does that sound like an equitable compromise of having those two items be televised and then us adjourning to retreat for goal setting and the rest?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I will be in contact with LCTV to make sure that's done, and I will readjust the schedule, the agenda, to put that in order. So, thank you for your inputs. We have the warrants. John?
Are we going to vote on that? Or are you just assuming we have a compromise?
It's Janet's decision.
Well, it's ultimately my decision, but I think we've come to a compromise of...
Well, I want to go on record as being opposed to televising retreats, period.
Okay.
So, I would go on record as saying, "Don't do substantive business at a retreat."
Okay. So, I think, you know, my decision as chair for the retreat will be that the initial part is televised with the search committee and Pat Carrera and her presentation, and then we will adjourn. So, moving on to the warrants.
Okay. You ready for this?
Oh, yeah.
Madam Shepard, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2963 of the general fund fiscal year 2016, dated July 17th, 2015, in the amount of $25,268.79.
Second.
And motion and a second. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Russell Duper, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Michelle Grotzky, aye.
Okay. I move the school committee, excuse me, approve the warrant batch number 2966 of the general fund fiscal year 2015, dated June 30th, 2015, in the amount of $182,240.97.
Second.
And motion and a second. Roll call?
Russell Duper, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Michelle Grotzky, aye.
Okay. So, that concludes the televised portion of our meeting. We do have an executive session scheduled.
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purposes of strategies that relates to collective bargaining with Unit A, and not to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Russ?
Russell Duper, aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Michelle Grotzky, aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Our retreat, Monday, July 20th, will begin at 12:30 for that portion that will be recorded. Thanks very much. Have a great day.